All right, we want to welcome everyone to Planning Commission tonight. Thank you for being here. We're gonna start off with a pledge that I'll lead, so.
Everyone please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to first excuse a few of our fellow commissioners tonight that won't be here. They had some other things going on and some sicknesses. Our agenda is going to be slightly amended from what is currently in front of us. We won't be doing the minutes tonight, and then we're gonna skip right to Title 15 amendments, public hearing. Brandon, is that you?
Yep.
All right.
I don't think we have a slide on this one, but that's all right. So we do have a request to add a permitted use to the I-1 light industrial zone. It's childcare centers, which we defined in the staff report for you. Currently, it's not a permitted use. However, due to the increase in jobs and businesses and industrial workers in the area, staff kind of saw some beneficial reasons to that being added. It is a heavily regulated license by the state, and so the applicants not only would have to get the city approval, but then they'd also have to obtain the state approval as well. And so the request is to apply that to the I-1 zone, so it'd be applicable citywide. Any questions on the request, or would you like to hear from the applicant?
Now, the regulations include the way it's even built out, the cleanliness-
Yes, so the-
... number of bathrooms.
The states has rules and regulations, and then also an operations manual. And so they spell out caretaker-to-child ratios, they spell out minimum square feet that are required in indoor and outdoor spaces, safety measures, things of that, that sort.
Right on, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so this one is a public hearing, so we'll have a few public hearings tonight. So just as we go into public hearing, we'll give each person three minutes to speak on whatever it is that you would like to speak on. We try to listen to all of those and take down those questions, and then at the end we'll ask the developer or city staff to help answer some of those questions. We ask that you try to keep it concise, and then also if there's repeat things, try to keep those, you know, in line, because if we hear it once, we will make sure to address those as much as possible. So with that, we'll move into public hearing on this item, on the Title 15 amendments. Is there anyone to talk to those? Come on up.
Awesome, thank you.
And state your name before, and then so we can write it down, and we can go over there.
Awesome, my name's Lane McGleston, my wife's Christina McGleston. We have two home daycares in Springville, so we were the ones who brought this to your attention to be able to have the zone update. We were trying to just find a location, and we found a location, but it's in the I-1 zone. And just for the amount of demand that's out there with the amount of growth, we've been looking to expand from the home daycare into a center, and we've just been having some difficulties finding locations that fit all the state requirements. So that's why we brought it up, and we would love for you to consider that opportunity, because we would love to do business here in Spanish Fork, would be wonderful. Any, I guess, questions on the regulations that are involved in the state, or?
I don't think so. No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you again.
All right, anyone else to speak to this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. Any questions or discussions? No? Okay, with that, I entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommends approval of the Title 15 amendments adding childcare centers as a permitted use in the I-1 zone.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any not in favor? Okay, we'll move on. Zone change, looks like the Garth Swenson zone change.
Awesome.
Do you have a couple slides for this one, Mike, if you don't mind? So we have been requested, hopefully you'll enjoy it, appreciate it, we have been requested to add a few more orientation slides. The next two zone changes are actually share a common property line, I don't know if we have a laser. So the first one is the Garth Swenson. The property line currently doesn't come into I-15, but as far as the cleanup, thank you. The DRC did recommend as far as the zoning map, if we jump to the next slide, Mike, this kind of shows it better, just the RR zoning would be cleaned up over the interchange, or the interchanges in I-15 itself, and so the property line actually ends back here along the railroad right-of-way. Probably a little more information than you needed, but... So the general plan is key here. The area is designated for industrial, and so both the applicant for Garth Swenson and Eldorado, which you'll see next, they're both requesting zoning consistent with the general plan. At this time, we don't have any development plans to come before you with those zone change requests, but we do anticipate a lot further discussion as far as improvements and access and things of that nature when we do have development plans. But with both applicants, applications, we did receive letters of support from the property owners as well as potential buyers. These are properties that are being requested for a zone change in anticipation of being sold for development purposes. Any questions on these items?
Excellent. Thank you, Brandon. All right, this is also a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and go into public hearing for the Garth Swenson zone change. Anyone here to speak to that one? All right, seeing none, we'll move out of the Garth Swenson zone change, public hearing. Any discussion items on that one, or any concerns?
Consistent with the general plan.
Yep.
I like the general plan for this area. No concerns for me.
And we'll see it again once something comes there, so. All right, with that, I entertain a motion.
We're looking for approval, not recommendation on this, right?
This one is recommendation.
Okay. I move that we recommend the Garth Swenson zone change based on the findings and conditions that the staff has reported.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Eldorado zone change.
I won't belabor this one. If you look at the inventory, next slide, please, you can see this is just directly to the northeast of the previous parcel we looked at. The potential buyer for this one is also looking to buy some of the previous property as well. Once again, you see the cleanup of the zoning map that would take place over I-15 if we jump to the next slide. There we go. Just to kind of tidy things up. Once again, this one is consistent with the general plan designation of industrial. Any questions on this one?
And no per, nothing designated yet on there?
This one, you should have a letter of support from the potential buyer that's looking to do caterpillar wheeler machinery.
Awesome.
Sales and service center there. We've met with the applicant on that a couple times, just to kind of outline the development review process and steps and timelines that they're looking to move forward on, but no official application at this point.
Perfect.
Any, all the utilities, how many, all that's been ran in that area when we did the area for Bradford's there, right? Everything's been ran out through that area?
Yes.
To support anything?
My understanding is the only concern that they work out is storm drainage for the area, but water, power, sewer, everything's in the area. And so with the development, we resolve that issue, but then also see the public improvements and widening along 1,000 north, and any other accesses that would come from the west as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is also a public hearing, so we'll go into public hearing for the Eldorado zone change from RR to light industrial. Anybody here to talk about this one? Seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any questions, concerns, comments? No, I think it's good, cleaned up. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
You can trade back and forth if you want.
There we go.
I move Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change for the Eldorado zone change contingent upon compliance with staff's findings.
Have we got a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, and this is, we wanted to, what?
We could use TLM.
TLM, okay. We're just gonna skip slightly ahead here to the project signage for TLM, project signage plan.
This is a fairly unique option that Spanish Fork City Code offers for property owners, business owners within city limits. When you have a center similar to what you've got identified here, they can come in to apply to ultimately the city council to receive approval for a project signage plan. It's similar, probably the most common example would be Canyon Creek. What it basically would allow is for more shared use of centrally located or highly visible location, located signs, excuse me. So what we have here is the old Kmart property building, which currently we don't have an identified user, but the property owner is making a lot of improvements to the property, the shell, in anticipation of attracting an end user. Of note, you can see that the oil change center is not being included, but if we jump to the next slide, you've got two signs identified, sign A and sign B. So sign A would be located just adjacent to the Arby's, and this is the sign proposal. What it does is it gives the city council the option, if a sign, if a site, excuse me, wouldn't qualify for a pole sign, like if it was under an acre, or if they have a project sign that they want to exceed either the height or the square feet of the signage area. So in this case, the signage area is under the maximum 200 square feet we allow, but it's over the 35 feet in height. Then sign B, if we jump to the next slide, this one was, is gonna be located right next to the Chipotle that's under construction. So you have Chick-fil-A right here, Burger King, here's the Chipotle site. This would be the second sign, and would service the areas that you see highlighted in yellow. So A would advertise for future tenants here. Sign B would be additional advertising and new adverti, or general advertising for properties that currently don't have it along Highway 6. In your staff report, you see that ultimately the city council does make the final decision, but they do look for a recommendation and advice from the Planning Commission regarding any project signage plan requests.
Do you recall the building height maximum in the commercial zone, right there?
No, not off the top of my head, but I can look it up.
You ordered 50, I wanna say 48.
48 for the C2?
That's what I'm looking, I'm looking to compare it to the 52-foot sign, it's comparable to me.
Yeah, you also have to keep in mind, maybe you already observed this, but Highway 6, it does then drop off into the properties, the great slopes down, so that was one of the considerations that staff heard as far as the applicant.
How many tenants, how many tenants are in the red portion there?
You've got Burger King, Chick-fil-A, Chipotle.
The red.
Oh, the red?
It was just one building, right?
Right, one building.
The Kmart?
Yep, the old Kmart.
So the sign will set off Highway 6 just slightly, so it'll drop down?
Yes, it has to be out of the UDOT right-of-way, and so if we jump to, do you want to jump to the interactive map? You can kind of see a good idea of, so in this case, the old Kmart site wouldn't qualify because currently they do not have property out adjacent to it, but under the project signage plan, they can go in with their neighbors and place signs located out along Highway 6. So you can see the property line is back here, curb line is here, mostly grass, and then the businesses do some additional landscaping when they construct.
Have you heard from the property owners? I assume they're in favor of it, but I want to, are they in favor of this?
They were the applicants.
So all these are held by the same applicant?
Two different parties, but they're working together.
Which is one of the reasons, though, for two different signs. Frankly, it's easy to do.
Yeah.
This one is not a public hearing.
Correct.
Any discussions on that, any other further questions?
I'm in favor of it.
I think it goes along with what we've done Canyon Creek, and yeah, it's a greater town for-
And the design is slightly different, but it looks similar enough that it'll blend too.
I just wish I knew what the names on the red area. I'd like to know that.
It's probably not gonna be Kmart, I'll tell you that.
It's not Kmart or ShopCo, right? Okay, with that-
Want a motion?
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we record, that we approve the proposed sign change for the TLM Expressway Square.
We got a motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And we want to do the general plan amendment now, or do you want to go back?
Let's go back to seven.
Okay, seven. All right. We're gonna go into another zone change in preliminary plat for the Spanish Highlands East project.
That was a little too quick. All right, let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. Just as far as orientation, you got Spanish Fork Parkway on the east side of the property, 100 South there on the north side of the property. You have Maple Mountain High School just off of the screen. The applicants are here tonight, thank you. We appreciate them being present. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to invite them up. I'll just go ahead and introduce it just a little bit. The area is currently general planned for zoning that would accommodate 12,000 square foot lots. The applicant has requested a zone change to the R-112, as well as preliminary plat approval for a master plan development. What that allows them to do is, as long as they meet an average lot size of 12,000 square feet, and that average does not dip below that, then they have a little bit of flexibility as they work with some of the odd angles and corners that you see on the property. So if we jump to the next slide, next one, please. This kind of shows the layout of the proposed subdivision. One thing of note that is being resolved is the master plan, transportation master plan, excuse me, calls for a roundabout at this intersection. So the applicant does have a note, and he is coordinating with our engineering department as far as how much of that roundabout needs to be accommodated on their site. Fairly confident that any of that land would not push them below the 12,000 square foot average. Currently, it's at 12,300 square feet is their average lot size, so these are fairly significant-sized lots, consistent with what the zoning would require.
Will you call out masonry walls? Where will the developer be required to?
So we'd have a trail cross-section on the south side of 100 South, with that would be a masonry wall, and then we would have a masonry wall on 2550 Spanish Fork. I can't remember, I think the trail's on the east side of the street, so we'd have a sidewalk here, but then there would be no access allowed for these lots here, there'd be a wall as well. So one accommodation that the designer was graciously to make is, we did have a few connections and stubs that we felt were adequate to tie into, namely here at the church, a stub here, stub here. With that, we appreciate the design and layout as far as not creating too many long speed traps, and so this one, you can't see it on this design, but we do have some traffic calming measures on that intersection there. One thing that was important is maintaining the trail system, and so with, this church was built, there's a trail here, so there's a trail dedication here that would come up to the road, and then just off the screen here, there's two trail connections, and so there's a trail connection being provided here that would allow people to access that trail, trail network as well.
Brandon, isn't there an easement right here, too?
So currently, there's some utility lines, and previously, the applicant did have a trail shown here. The DRC, when they looked at it and made the recommendation for the Planning Commission, they didn't necessarily have a strong desire either way, and I think they even gave the direction that if the applicant wanted to remove it, they could. This one here.
That's not a private utility easement, correct? It's a MUE city?
Yes.
Is it gonna be rerouted?
No, it'll stay.
No structures then, got it.
Not over just the easement portion, they would still have buildable areas that you can see here.
Yeah, can they build their fence in between lots 60 and what looks like 95? Can they build their fence on top of the MUE?
Yeah, so, and jump in anytime, Mike, if I'm incorrect, but I think it's, or Brian probably, but I think the easement lines up with the property line, just so we'd avoid that issue of the fence.
I'm sorry, I just, I might be, I don't know if I have this. Just sitting right here, right here, where they have this fence right here. I agree, it's well-placed, but there's, there'd be a fence here.
Yes.
Will the city allow?
Footings for the fence there?
Yes.
Okay.
For that short stretch, I don't think that'd be a problem. If we had to go in and service the line or work on the line, then obviously there'd be a coordination effort that would take place, and then for something that short, the city would then make it whole. Let me look at my notes real fast. Yeah, so just to recap, the property is currently zoned RR, rural residential, it's what we've utilized over the years as kind of a holding zone, so if somebody wants to continue agricultural-related activities, they can. It's very similar to the county's RA5 zone. R-112, which is being requested, is consistent with the general plan designation for the area, and then with that, they're looking at preliminary plat approval for master plan development. That includes 119 lots.
The previous slide shows the zoning map, is R-112, I see R-112 to the west, south, and looks like R-115 to the east, but R-112 again to the northeast, is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is this the area?
Yes, blends in, blends in nicely.
And general plan calls for low density or moderate density?
This is low, which is, it corresponds with the R-112.
Brandon, can you speak to the, when you said traffic calming along that straightaway there, what did you think about?
I'll let Mike address that one, I can't remember what they're called, the flare-out?
Is there a plan showing it?
I didn't include it in this one.
The road narrows right here in front of lots 41 and 42. Just ran the curb out to narrow the road? Yeah, and then out in front of, I can read the number six.
67, 71, and six?
And is the idea on the trail that they'd come down here, then cross, and then down the park strip here, and then back on?
Yeah, and so what this doesn't show is the full improvements of the right-of-way, so obviously we're gonna have city sidewalks, and so the idea would be, you've got the trail system here, there's the existing connection here, we complete it with this segment, and then if they want to jump directly to the Highway 6 trail, they can either come down the existing street here, or they can come down here. We felt this was a lot more important for maybe some of the property owners in here, but then there will also be a trail leg over here on Spanish Fork Parkway.
What's the width of that right there?
20 feet.
And how long is it?
I would say, I don't, I don't want to guess.
130.
130.
Six-foot fencing of both sides?
We require a six-foot, a 10-foot trail in the middle centered on the 20, and six-foot vinyl on both sides.
Is there any lighting on that?
No, not required.
But we'll definitely try to put a streetlight close to.
Usually, you're gonna have a streetlight here at this type of-
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that's smart. I'm glad the city does that, that's actually a good idea.
And it worked out well, there's also an existing irrigation facility there, so we're back for the buck.
Any questions for Brandon at this point?
Or questions for the applicant? I don't know if you had a chance-
I'd like to hear about the types of homes they're putting on there.
I was just gonna lead into that. We can pull it up. There's, there was an attachment that was provided to Borg Docs that shows the type of product that they're looking to build. Do you mind pulling that up, Mike? Do we have anybody from Ivory tonight?
Just me.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the houses, or should we just scroll through?
Yeah, you're welcome to maybe scroll back.
Sorry, bear with us for a second. It's gonna be the last attachment, I believe. So if you go up to the top.
Where do we come out on street trees for NPDs?
Oh, go right ahead.
Right.
Okay. As a master plan development, we do require the street tree master plan. The applicant has provided one, it's currently under review, we just had a few corrections, call-outs to make sure it matches desired species in the, in the right-of-way, but then also minimum tree sizes, give them a better chance of survival and whatnot. So that's something that does get implemented with the building permit, but the applicant has provided that to the city.
It's nice to see variety and different things.
Yeah, this is an earlier version of it. Let's go ahead and jump to the catalog real fast. So this is the catalog that was provided by Ivory. Unfortunately, not, not every page kind of deals with the elevations, but, so here we start in, what they're hoping to do is, a lot of these lots comply with the minimum width, we require 100 feet in depth and 100 feet in width, and many of those do meet that, and so what that gives them is the option for a lot of third-car garage options. But with this, they also included some of their other standard products.
What is the star, two-story with?
Two-story with main floor, owner's suite. Go ahead and jump down. I've spent too much time talking about it since I'm not the Ivory rep. Let's keep going. Oh, so this just kind of shows they do have a couple of different types, styles of home. Let's go down.
Are they planning on basements?
Yes.
So we're talking five-bedroom, four-bath, I mean, these are-
Fairly large, these wouldn't be considered entry-
No.
-entry homes in my opinion. Down towards the bottom, they do have a few one-story options. Oh, a little too far.
It's a lot of variety.
Yeah, these ones are on the smaller end, but they're both still over 3,000 square feet. Here's a few, they're 29. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? Thank you.
No, that's time. Developer, did you want to say anything before we go into public hearing?
No, the only, I'm the engineer.
Come on up here to the mic real quick.
Yeah, Brad. Brian Gaber with LEI. Brad Mackey, apologize, he had a conflict tonight, and so kind of divide and conquer. The only thing I wanted to mention is, at DRC, they commented about, when you talked about that trail between 94, I can't read that, but-
The fence?
Yeah, where the easement is?
Yes.
I think the DRC said, you know, they weren't that worried about having the trail corridor there if we wanted to reroute those. Ivory's fine putting it there, so if you guys, if you guys would like the trail corridor there, similar to the one we did down here where you've got a 20-foot trail corridor, just, we thought it might make sense still just for walking access to the high school, but anyway, so it shows it without right now, but they're, they're fine putting it in if, if the city has a preference, so that's the only thing I wanted to maybe mention, so.
Thank you. All right, we will go into public hearing for this, so if you're here for this item, come on up, and again, let's keep it to three minutes if we can.
Hi, John Sumption, I live on the other side of Maple Mountain High School, and I was just wondering about where the exits to the high school come out, and how that corresponds with the exit location of the-
This one right here?
Yeah, that one, yep. I just wondered, the traffic is pretty bad right after school and right before school. pretty bad right after school and right before school, and I was wondering how they, like, what it's like living there and trying to get out in the morning? So if you, I, is there anywhere you can show where the existing high school comes out and?
We'll have him show it around, he's gonna pull up right now. Is that it, across the street here? I don't know which one's working.
Is there any other high school exit to the, to the west of there? Like, can you go to a zoomed-out map? So is the exit going to be here?
Uh, it's further to the west.
Okay.
It's a hundred and ten feet from the church.
Yeah.
Okay, it's nice that it's so much offset here.
Just one lot in.
Okay, thanks. I just didn't want it to line up with these exits, 'cause that makes it weird.
Anyone else here to talk about this one?
Yeah, hi, uh, my name is August Bigelow. I live on that weird stub, that four fifty south. I'm right below this, um, almost exactly where you got your cursor, yeah. Um, I know there was like a lot of, uh, conversation on Facebook, which I think that thread got totally deleted. Um, but, there's a lot of people like talking about like zoning and usage and like that. Um, I wanna note that everyone kind of talks about like trails and stuff going in here and having like walkable space, and not just having like kind of a, a Minotars labyrinth of homes that people just walk around and can't get out of. Um, I do appreciate that there's some trail connections. There is, I have a couple of questions specifically. There is a ditch right here. What are the plans about that? Um, and, this is totally a selfish sort of thing, but is, is there a way that we can trail connect that back to this way? So, some of us who are trapped in here can't easily get out of there walking. So I don't know if that's any kind of a, a thought that like, we could have more walkability in this part of the town. Um, just we're like, it's all houses and even though we're kind of trapped in just homes everywhere, um, it is nice being able to walk out, so that's kind of my concern is just walkability.
Perfect, thank you, and we'll answer that right at the end.
Oh, okay, cool, alright, thanks.
Thanks, August. Anyone else?
Thank you. Hey, Johnny McCoy, I just have a question. On twenty-five fifty east, uh, there's been so much development right in that area. Is there any plans from the city to actually widen that street?
Perfect, yeah.
And if so, do you have a timeline for that?
Okay, we'll talk about that right at the end. Good question.
Could you go back to the green, the undeveloped picture?
The zoning map?
The zoning map, that show the green and the yellow, is that what you're referring to?
That one. Diane Kaufman, I reside just, um, west of the, on two eighty south. Um, do you see that intersection of the light lines?
Right here?
There's a tree named Steve. It's been there probably since pioneers. An application has been submitted, submitted to give it heritage status, which would protect it by state law. Um, will the developer be willing to accommodate that tree with some green space? That puts it, if you go now to Ivory's map. What is that lot? Somewhere in there? Anyway, um, status is, has been applied for giving that tree heritage status to protect it. It's a healthy tree, it's a beautiful, huge tree. It just doesn't make sense to cut it down for the sake of putting in more houses.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What type of tree is Steve, do we know?
See, we don't know, that's why.
Trying to figure out the type.
I don't know that it's the type of tree it is. It could be the age, it could be the size.
Um, I have a question with regard to.
Go ahead and state your name.
Oh, Carla Shade. I live on two eighty south, so one of the access points here. Um, up at the top, when you zoom in, it says no access to one hundred south. Can you explain that to me, why it looks to me like there's holes?
So the streets will connect, but we don't allow for the property, the lots, to have like a backyard driveway to.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's not that the street is like hitting the brick wall? That was confusing. Um, okay, so those will have access points. The second question I had was, why on the, the trail that goes here from the church, yep, why not run it straight down instead of having people have to go on a street with cars?
Well, I, we'll bring up the trails map at the end here.
Okay.
Talk about that.
And my next question is, why is, does this development have no green space within it?
Okay.
So, um, yeah, those are my questions.
Thank you, Carla.
So, my name is Stuart Worthington, and my question generally is, and I don't, I can't see it on the map, but one of the concerns I have with developments such as this is, if you go down to old, the old Spanish Fork, the roads are like a hundred feet wide. And it seems like the developments nowadays, the roads are skinnier and skinnier. And as you and I both know, that if this was all houses right now, there'd be about fifty cars parked on the street. And so it creates a hazard as you try and navigate around the neighborhoods, 'cause you've got fifth wheels and cars parked on the street, 'cause no one has one car anymore, it seems. So I'm just curious, is the width of the streets, is that consistent with the current code that, what's out there, or is this gonna be one of those neighborhoods where you pull into and, and you've gotta wait for another car to come the other way before you can make your way around? So that's my question.
Thank you.
Hi, neighbor.
Hey, how's it going?
Um, Eddis Hill, I live actually north of this, um, development, and my biggest concern is um, traffic during mornings and evenings when school lets out on four hundred. Um, are we gonna develop that four hundred out to be larger two lanes up, higher up, because it's getting to be very congested right now, and with another hundred and nineteen homes? And if it's my household, I have four drivers, that's four more cars, so times that by that, and you only have two exit points, so it's my only concern.
Thank you.
We all share that one, Eddis.
I'm alright.
Spanish Fork Parkway, we're desperately trying to get it to connect as well, just to help alleviate it.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, yes. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Brigida Perrins, and I just live, um, on two eighty south, I'm on a corner. Um, so, just help me understand, are you telling me there are one, two, three points into this development to drive into? Three points, is that all?
One, two, three, four.
So there's none on one hundred south?
Five, six.
So one on one hundred south, that one is not an entry point, right?
Yes.
Six points of access.
Okay.
And connectivity.
Depends on how you count these, and that's.
Okay, I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused, because I thought you said that there would be a wall and there's no.
These streets come on to one hundred south?
Yeah, it is confusing, sorry about that.
Just like we're talking to Carla about, that, that no access means you can't have a driveway that pulls directly on to.
Means the residents can't have a driveway on to one hundred south.
Right.
But the overall subdivision does, there's two of them.
Okay, all right. I don't want that traffic coming through my street. I mean, and that's a lot of traffic, and so I think between the traffic from the high school in the mornings, the afternoons, the evenings with the traffic of people coming home, um, having that be an entry point is a concern. I've got small kids. My street is full of small children. Um, so that to me is a concern.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Name's Carrie Swinson. I live on, um, two thousand east, two ninety-four south. I forgot where I lived. Um, my frustration is also with the roads and the traffic, because it's pretty congested as is. We have the traffic not just from the high school, you have Sierra Bonita, and then you also have Maple Mountain or Maple Grove parents taking and picking up. Um, the roundabout that's down on Fourth North, you can't go on Fourth North anymore, because it's got a flow of traffic constantly, so this roundabout that's gonna be by Maple Mountain High School is gonna be a nightmare, because we won't be able to get on the road on one hundred south anymore, because they're constantly coming and going. There's nothing to stop them from coming. Um, my other concern is, what is that road, the parkway?
I've got a sign for a parkway.
Okay, that's a nightmare too. There's only, you know, the single roads going both ways. When you're trying to turn into that subdivision where you live, um, there's generally a long line of cars behind us, because there's nowhere for them to go. Um, my other frustration concern is Highway six, and with that development that's going into, um, Powerhouse Road in Salem, the majority of people are gonna take Highway six. They're gonna be right there in that light. It's already crazy enough as it is. Adding this development into that whole thing is crazy. I, I, my backyard faces Highway six, and there's constantly on the weekends, hot, summer weekends, the road is backed up. We've had, uh, we tried to get from the light by Holiday Oil one time, to the next light, I don't know what it is, by Pass Somerset, it took us a half an hour to get there. It's crazy, and so all these roads, I don't know how you're gonna widen them, but it's just, the other frustration is by Sierra Bonita with the townhomes, there's cars parked constantly on both sides. That's a big safety issue, because you have the crosswalk, and I get, we tell our kids to cross on the crosswalk, but all kids don't do that. We have parents that line up on that street to pick up their kids, and you can't even see the kids half the time. Then you also have, like today, when I came home, we have like lacrosse and different games that go on in that field at Sierra Bonita, so in the evenings, it's full of cars down the road. Then you have Maple Mountain, when they're playing baseball or they have any kind of game, that whole road on one hundred south is lined with cars. So how are you gonna accommodate all of that stuff on that road? That is nuts. It's, it's frustrating, because we're gonna have so much traffic, and once these homes and this development's in, you can't take it out, you can't change it. So I feel like the road issue needs to be addressed before the development goes in. That needs to be taken care of. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Mike, there's a lot of talk about traffic and roads. Do you wanna start with some of those?
Um, I'm Ian Brankin, hope at any point. So this is a map, you guys can get on it on our website and get, it's our master plan. Um, so we have a traffic engineer that runs a model that goes off actual counts and predicts fields like this developing, and they say how much, um, how wide does the road need to be with the speed limits, they look at signals, look at roundabouts, and they give us a recommendation, um, on what, what size to build. Um, Steve doesn't build roads. Um, they, uh, a lot of these were county roads at some point, and then as the development comes in, 'cause a two-lane road can accommodate quite a bit of traffic, but it can't accommodate left turns, right, very well, or right turns, or those types of things. So as development happens, we assume there's more and more need for left turns and, and right turns and shoulders for parking and those things. So if we look, maybe just hop over to a guy down here, and I live right here, so I drive these streets quite a bit. So you can see this development here, when you guys had, well, a lot of you guys were, um, buying your houses, this was, uh, just a field on this side, right? So that wind this side, and then when this gentleman, uh, developed his, you can see where the asphalt was, and now you can see, here's the curb being put in. So then that wind the road on that side, and so, instead of a two-lane road, now you have a shoulder on one side for right-hand turns. Now that this is going in, the other side develops, um, there's now a right-hand turn and those types of things. So with this development, um, they'll widen that road. So, I've lost my image. So as you look, sorry, I need to drive back down here. So you can see the road will be widened to this curb line. Um, there'll be a trail with a park strip, and then that wall that you saw in front of Spanish Highlands, that'd be the same type of wall that'd be continuing this way, so. This does give opportunity for, um, turn lanes, right turn lanes, left turn lanes, um, that sort of a thing. Um, so really, it, it gets worse before it gets better, right? The, the high school's not great. I've sat at this four-way stop for forty cars' worth of people and waited and waited, and been here with my, you know, not right here, but other places with my kids' soccer games, you have to wait a while. Um, with this one, what they'll do is widen the road, um, they'll put in the roundabout, um, here for traffic control. It's also the safest place for pedestrians, um, significant crash, uh, injuries, significantly less, um, deaths. Um, and then they'll also widen Spanish Fork Parkway, so if you've been out to where the church is here, and then the asphalt like disappears, so that'll be widened to the width where the church is, so they don't just continue that from the church all the way down. Those should give spots for shoulders and other things. Um, so as far as traffic goes, this is what our, the traffic engineer, uh, guest was going in here, right? So we give them our zoning, our general plan, he's put the amount of cars he predicted coming out of this, and, and this is what he recommended as far as the width, um, goes on these maps, so, I hope that answers all the questions. I've tried to hit on a couple of them.
And I think the other is, Spanish Fork, uh, Parkway, right, is going to be, or there's an interchange coming in. Do you wanna point that out and kind of explain that?
Um, so, go over the tracks. Right now, dead ends, um, it's a railroad issue we're working through. It should be next year to eighteen months, and that'll be all connected. Do you need to get a shovel to help you? I would love to.
You need to contact the railroad company.
In, in fact, we, uh, we, we, uh, encourage them to go quicker, and they, they suggested that if we could continue asking, it'd be slid to the bottom of the pile, kind of a thing, so, we.
They don't, they don't care about us.
Yeah. It's been a frustrating process, not just for those who live there, which we know it is, but for us to try and get it through.
And I think just kind of going with the traffic problem, I live right here, just kinda giving you where, so I feel a lot of the pain that we're talking about, but with the connectivity, I know that we were talking about how many connections there are. There'll be a lot of connections all over that will hopefully take some congestion off this road, 'cause I think that that's what we're talking about, right? There's, there's not connection right now. It's all through Rio Grande or that other side, whatever it turns into, so. There's a lot of traffic.
And they go fast.
They get going quick, um, but.
I don't see many folks in here using this street. Um, maybe the ones that are on this, this end, right? Um, but if you're anywhere but this little corner here, the quickest way is to hundred south or going east to Spanish Fork Parkway. I wouldn't see them coming down, going back up, around through to here and up to hundred south. I, I think it'd be pretty localized to that, just that end of the, the development. That's why I would drive.
So it won't alleviate what is currently on Rio Grande, but it shouldn't add to it? Is that basically what you're saying?
I mean, there might be a corner house here or there, but there's enough, sorry, let me go back to the other drawing, this isn't helpful. There's a couple here, I guess, that would go down through rather than coming up in this way.
Mm-hmm.
I'm guessing they'd probably try and cut through the church parking lot, but.
It's faster. One of the questions was twenty-five fifty east expansion. Is there a widening project? I know there's a roundabout.
No.
Two roundabouts now?
No, so it'll look, whoa, sorry. It's kind of a mess right now, driving through dirt and stuff with this development being done, but it'll look, if you go on the center line of this road right now and looked one way, uh, it'll be the same width going the other way. But again, it's, um, aside from the city raising taxes to get money to go buy property, um, like this farm, cheap, uh, kraut place here. Uh, it's typically with development, that's something we exact from the developers, they go and put it in. Um, but it's, it is kind of piecemeal, so that's why it kinda gets worse before it gets better. But this one will be great, because from Rio Grande all the way on the west side of the road to hundred south will be completed with this project, so that's.
Are the developers paying for the roundabout?
Yeah, impact fees are, um, contributing, they're gonna put it in, yeah, right. I don't know how this public hearing thing works, but I just saw something on the placemat that is a concern. At entry top, is an easy cut-through to go down to Spanish Fork Parkway.
This one?
That one right there. If I was going east out of the high school and the roundabout was backed up, I would be a big temptation to turn right.
was backed up, I would be a big temptation to turn right, go through the subdivision and then turn right down 2550 East. And if there isn't some kind of, something done for that, that'll be a common complaint in that top rate.
They already use Rio.
Can you go back to the overall view to see where that connects?
They use Rio Grande to go around the four ways off already.
It has to be pretty backed up to be back over 300 feet on a roundabout.
So they'd come down, you're saying they'd come down.
Yep.
Round here, down?
No, there's an exit.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
That one?
It's over 300 feet, I believe, from the intersection. It'd be, it'd be a significant backup on a roundabout, although it is as high as possible.
And I think, I think the exit to the, to the parking lot so close to that roundabout is concerning as well. I mean, that exit is that parking lot and the roundabout right there.
Just trying to get to the stop sign.
From that exit.
Exit is a long line of cars.
It won't be a stop sign. It'll be a roundabout.
I know, it's a roundabout. So that exit is going to be super close to a roundabout.
Michael, one of the questions was, was brought up about the street widths. They're hoping the streets are wide because they're safer. You've addressed that in other meetings.
Um, Mike, in front of the schools and stuff?
No.
No, in interior of the subdivision. I understood, it was interior of the subdivision, right?
I know it's a safety issue, but it'd benefit from.
Yeah. So the road width would be 29 feet to the lip of gutter and then to the face of curb. The curbs are two more feet. So your tire could be in the gutter and then there's enough room for the cars to pass. And the principle behind it, there's a couple of things. One is more room for lots, right? There's more, less roads. If you've driven in the blocks, there's some roads that are 90 feet wide, 30s, Center Street and those. They're not as needed. And then the, the wider the street, a lot of times higher the speeds. If you've driven on Center Street in Provo, which I hate doing, but next to where the State Capitol building is, where it's 15 miles an hour, there's trees, there's cars at diagonal parked. I don't dare go more than like five miles an hour because I feel like I'm going to run into someone. But I found that I'm super aware of my surroundings. I'm aware of what's going on. I'm looking for pedestrians. I'm watching for taillights to back into me. And so the, the principle of narrowing the streets, it is harder to pull trailers. I can vote for that and a couple of things like that. But it really has the driver more aware than they would be on Spanish River Parkway. When I'm on the Parkway, I'm listening to music. I'm not worried about a kid jumping out because there's a wall on one side, a field on the other side, and I'm just driving.
Does the data support your feelings?
Yeah.
Cause that's what, that's when you convinced me. Your feelings aside, it was the data.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm 34.
Put somebody just half your age on that road. They don't have, they're not aware.
Right, sure.
I was there once, so I know.
Sure.
Does the city have any kind of restrictive covenant against, like they said, the fifth wheels and the boats?
Are we still public?
Being put on the street?
Uh, timeframe, but not a, like certain vehicles not being allowed.
They just have to have on street parking if they wouldn't allow.
So just to answer that concern, right, if you have concerns with people who are parking things that are not allowed on the street, such as a fifth wheel trailer, just that's an enforcement. Maybe talk to your neighbor first, right? I think that's probably a good rule of thumb. But there are rules in the city that you can't have a trailer, I believe it's 72 hours.
24.
Is it 24? Okay, 24 hours on the street. So there are rules against those.
They've gone along 100 South, like where she was.
Right.
Down by the school kind of. And they just took it up to their truck, drive it around the block every couple of days and then put it right back to the same spot. Move it to the one way or the other. And they'd get parked out there for a couple of months.
So that, that's something, if there's enough complaints, so.
Parking, if there's not a widening of a road, can we do some kind of a, I don't know, enforce it more?
So the enforcement is done by, like, you know, we're, we're out of public hearing, but the enforcement would be us as citizens reporting those things. That's how those things are taken care of. That's how, how law enforcement is able to, to make those recommendations. I wanted to come to just a couple of other things that are on here so we can make sure that we're talking about everybody's concerns. There was a, I think these kind of go a little bit hand in hand, so I'm just going to kind of throw them at whomever wants to talk about them. There was the ditch that Austin talked about that runs behind these houses, talking about maybe a walkway, what are we doing with that ditch? Is anybody using it at this point? And then I think that goes along with the green space conversation and also Steve, the tree.
There's also why this trail just hasn't.
And the trail system, the trail system would probably go over there too.
Ditch? I can take the ditch, I believe the ditch.
Will you come up here to the microphone?
Here, sorry.
You're the only one we're going to require to come to microphone.
Everybody else was just talking down there. I believe the, the turnout is here. There's also a pipe that runs along the west side of this property line through these backyards. This turns out into this ditch which waters this field. So the ditch will be abandoned when the project develops.
And who's, who's at the property line?
About this pipe here, because in our backyard we have a.
Yeah, that's a, that's an irrigation company ditch, uh, pipe. And so that's completely unrelated to this project. No, no, this, this is an irrigation company ditch and it'll, it'll likely stay intact for a long time. Yeah. Yeah. Cause it runs through and it goes all the way north and it services a lot of properties further north and east.
So this one's gone?
But this is, this ditch is a ditch that services this, this property. So it'll, it'll be abandoned and torn out.
Well, homeowners have the opportunity to purchase a lot if it's behind them, if they don't want to develop it and they just want to buy the lot behind them.
Oh, you'd like, if somebody wanted to buy one of the, you'd have to go to Ivory and, yeah, I mean, they're, they're in the business of developing and building homes, but I'm sure they would, they would sell you a lot and not build a home. But again, I can't speak for them. Okay, thank you. You up?
So maybe additional parks in the area and then the tree. This is the city's parks, master plan, let's just say. So Sierra Bonita, park there. There is money planned for a next fiscal year budget to, to finish the space here as a park. You have that space there that is city owned, park space, and the city has plans to put a park someplace between this road here and, and kind of the junction of State Route 89 and US Highway six. And that is the city's plan for park space in this part of the world for now. Occasionally this document gets updated. Our Parks and Recreation Department led that project just this past year. And this is the result of that in terms of being the guide for additional park space that the city would acquire either by way of just go and purchasing it or negotiating with a developer to purchase it at a time like this when, when a development is proposed, given that there really isn't any park space on, on that document. When this project was proposed and we reviewed it, we didn't give the developer any, any feedback to the effect that they needed to anticipate planning for a park or, there aren't many conversations about purchasing park space or that type of a thing. So that's where we're at as staff relative to additional park space here. Related to that, the idea of a trail that might run between the existing Ivory development and the planned Ivory development versus having, you know, kind of the split route that could go either east or west, just on sidewalks on the city streets. There's nothing that would prevent that from happening. I think if that's something that the planning commission felt was of value, that's certainly something that particularly with this being a master plan development would be within your purview.
Isn't the trails system that's currently there like right here?
We have one here and one there. So, um, you can kind of take your pick. So, and I'm just maybe going to give you my opinion. I, frankly, I see some value maybe in doing what I think was suggested in having a trail just right down the backside of these lot lines. As we discussed it earlier though, the potential drawback, and we do have a couple of places in the city where we have really long 20 foot wide trail corridors that don't have accesses into them. And that is not ideal space.
It's, it's a, it's a safety issue when it's that long. It's not, it's not worth it. I would not be in favor of something like that.
So that's why we try to keep them shorter and only use those as, as connections where, for example, we're trying to connect two public streets.
The trail down through Fieldstone by the Sugar Beet Plan.
That's my example of what hasn't necessarily proven to be the best.
That's not, that's not a great situation.
Yeah.
It encourages crime.
It, it can. It can allow people to have easy access to places where, um, maybe you don't want people to be, people to be maybe even trapped and different things like that.
And then do you want to talk about this little of a tree?
I, I think it's entirely appropriate for us to talk to Ivory about the prospect of somehow avoiding that tree with construction. That's, that's what I have. I mean, I absolutely am too. I'm dead serious. There's no reason to. There's no reason to remove it if it can be avoided. And there's a lot of space out there to work with as I see it.
Trees planted by pioneers particularly are, are apt to be protected because of their historic value. When you consider all the owners of this land prior to that farmed that land and still felt that tree was significant, to have a developer come in now and take it out is just wrong.
We're happy to have that conversation. I mean, certainly I.
I mean, he has a name.
Thanks.
I don't know many trees are named, so. Do we, but we don't have any idea what the, the, how long the tree's been there, how long, what species it is, if an arborist has looked at it or anything like that, right?
An arborist.
With the application.
And then they jump on the train. It's an indigenous tree.
Hey, I love that tree. We took our pictures when we were announcing that we were having triplets right next to that tree. So, love the tree.
Biased.
I'm not saying I love the tree. So, yeah, I'll, I'll send you a picture, Brandon. Okay. I don't know if we've missed any of the concerns. I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic. Traffic was loud and clear. And I, I think that's something that we need to, I, I, we've talked about it. There's going to be some connections. There's going to be some things that, that we, the high school is going to create traffic and that's going to be there whether or not this project goes in or another project goes in. This, the 400 North concern that was brought up earlier, you know, 400 North is up here. Hopefully 20, the new interchange and Spanish Fork Parkway will help to alleviate some of the traffic that's coming down towards the high school and maybe taking it away from the high school. But again, it's going to get probably a little bit worse before it gets better with that. But there are a lot of plans in place to try and make that alleviated in the future. Mike, one question I did have that I don't know if we discussed is this street here is going to be just as wide as this street here, or is it slightly smaller in front of the high school or bigger?
Uh, same.
Same. So that kind of gives you an idea of the width of 2550 as it develops. And then as you go farther down, there's going to be some commercial development across from Holiday. So that street is going to get a little bit wider. That intersection, Highway six and 2550 is a U dot area. So if you have complaints for them, they'd love to hear those.
It's actually helpful.
Didn't we recently, Michael, didn't we recently see something at that intersection of some improvements that were going to be done at that light?
Which one, sorry?
Uh, Hollywell. Hollywell.
Yeah, the way you're on about the intersection of.
And a median.
And a median.
And a median.
Really long median.
Uh, this one.
And then down at Highway six also, is that whatever we were putting in there, wasn't there going?
So this west side will, will widen and there'll be a roundabout.
Which hopefully should alleviate some of that waiting.
Medians to block the.
Right in, right outs.
The outs with trailers that are fun.
Is that the city putting in a roundabout?
Nope. No, it's the developer here.
That's, that's something that's maybe that Michael mentioned it, Jesse just mentioned it too. It gets worse before it gets better. And the reason for that is because the developers pay for the improvements. That's by design. Otherwise, if we had the infrastructure in first, we would be paying through the nose in taxes. And I, my personal belief is that's worse.
And I also think.
It's uncomfortable, but we would be paying a significant increase in taxes if we were doing all of the public infrastructure before allowing the development.
Michael mentioned it before, but a roundabout, what Michael said earlier is roundabouts are safer in the long run because there's less fatalities at roundabouts because people go slower.
Right there, there's a lot of traffic, like capping trailers and stuff. And if you're going to try to pull your capping trailer around that road, that's a nightmare.
Right.
It's designed for a semi, it'll work.
Have there been studies done on roundabouts in an emergency situation? Like.
Versus a signal or? Versus like a signal or?
Well, signals can, can be turned off.
Like a four way stop.
So you're saying if there's a vehicles coming through, how do they get through?
No, I'm talking about an evacuation. In an earthquake situation, my fear is all of this new development you're talking about is to the right of us. In an earthquake, anything right of us is going to be in worse shape than we are in.
East.
Yeah, to the east of us, yeah. Right. So I just wondered if studies have been done as to how that many cars evacuate in an emergency situation such as an earthquake? And has the city given thought to that?
I don't have concerns with that.
Cause just to holiday weekends.
Do we?
Does the city engineer that was planning these roads, do they go up to these, I mean, I'm not trying to use respect or anything, but do they actually go to these areas and look and see what the traffic is before and after school and stuff like that?
I don't know. Mike, do you?
Mike, when you drive home at night, do you look at that?
I live there, so yeah.
What's the proposed timeframe to start the development in that area?
Brian, do you? Ivory's century.
Soon as they're through.
Yeah. They have to put roads in, they have to put curb and gutter.
So they'll, they'll do it in the cases, but.
And Brian, Ivory's planning on taking it through to construction and completion?
Yes.
So everything? Okay. On my list of things, we've covered all the concerns. Is there anything I missed?
That's all the, all the ones I wrote down.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have any concerns.
Do you?
Yeah. And, and the only, the only reason phase four is what it is, is because Ivory's worried that the city will take longer to get the, the right of way needed to build the roundabout. If we can get that in place, I, I believe they're fine with moving. Cause we, we can, we can punt over and do the roundabout later on. They don't have a problem with it financially, they're fine. But they didn't want the design process for the roundabout.
To hold it up.
Those are not simple. They're complicated designs and they take some time. They just didn't want that to hold up phasing. So that's all, that's the only reason that this is what it is. But again, they're flexible if the city gets that stuff done.
Does the city have the land for the, for all of the parts of the roundabout? Not yet. So that's, that's smart, smart planning. The city doesn't have all the land yet anyway.
So one thing that the developer brought up in the city, apparent, these things are not wanting to work for me today. What do we think as a planning commission on this? We talked about that easement or that trail. Do we have strong feelings one way or another?
I'm okay with that it is. And if they were going to change it, I'd want them to come back and I want to see a new plan. Cause it would, it would change the design. They're not going to have a, a road where the trail is, right? So they would change the design. I'd want to relook at the plot and I'm okay with the trail system.
I think they were just going to put a trail just right here.
Right over the easement.
Right there. Oh, okay. So they'd walk on that street and then go into the path and then back onto the street.
And access.
It's, that's not better in my.
Yeah. It's not too much.
What's the difference between that and doing the same thing over here?
Exactly.
Nothing?
Yeah, I'm.
Nothing.
I wouldn't be for either of those.
If anything, it's, they're crossing two streets instead of.
You're putting them in next houses.
Size on like the wall on the side of the walkway?
My opinion on this commissioner or chairman is I think it's consistent with the surrounding zoning. It falls through really well with, with what's in the neighborhood around it. In the areas that were there, I mean, I remember when that was all fields, I played and did a lot of other things up in that area when it was just fields. And no schools and that up there. So the developments around it added to a lot of the problems that are now existing that we've heard tonight. I don't see this being anything different than that, what's been improved in the past. I do not like the idea of adding that for the reasons that have been stated. I, I ride the trails and walk the trails down by the ballpark that we, I mentioned. I, I, I ride the trails and, and walk the trails down by the ballpark that we, that I mentioned. It's a little bit of a creepy feeling. I wouldn't want my wife or daughters to be doing that by themselves at night. So I'd like, I actually like the idea of it coming back out onto a street where there are people looking out their front doors or whatever. Traffic is an issue wherever, whenever we put these things in. And so it's a valid concern. But in all the ones we've done, we've had some very, uh, strong feelings about it in years past. The developments went in, the city's team has done a good job in alleviating that as much as possible. And I, I'm totally confident they'll do that with this one. I do think the, I do think it's a simple ask though for, I mean, it's, I can't believe, me of all people saying this, but I think the tree, if we can get them to make a concession for that, I think it should be looked at. I think David's point is it's, it's not a, it's not a hard thing for them to look at. It's a significant ask. I mean, that's them giving away a lot, which is a lot of money on their side. But it, it would help with the surrounding communities. It's a significant landmark. And it, it might as well be something that as they're asking for the zoning change, it, it's a reasonable ask on our side. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, my thoughts echo Commissioners Todd's here. I don't think the government has a reasonable reason to say no to development that is as nice as the ones to the west and south and the northeast in the same zoning and consistent with the general plan. In fact, I think the government's job is to protect property rights, not take them away without really good reason. And there aren't good reasons here. As for the tree, I, I don't think, I don't feel comfortable having the government act to protect the tree other than I'm okay with the application that's in and that can play out. But I, I, I don't, I'd prefer that my motion does not include anything related to the tree.
I, I agree with what's been said. I think that this, the product that's being built matches the homes that are surrounding it. I love the fact that this road, maybe, you know, maybe this one is the selfish one is, because this is in front of my house, isn't a straight shot because people do get going fast. The streets are, are what they are and there's a lot of traffic going to be there. But I think that the developer did a good job of creating ways to try to reduce speeds within this development and also the impact that it'll have on the surrounding developments that are currently there. I do agree with not having the trails go behind houses and, and too long of trails, making sure we have streetlights there. I am okay with asking the applicant to look at protecting the tree just due to the fact that it is a landmark. And at the end of the day, there might be, there, there might be a lot of value added to, to having that tree there. At the end of the day, I do think that it is our role as a, as a government to protect property rights and to make sure that we're, we're not infringing upon those. So I'm okay with the development.
My only, my only thought to your tree comment is you say it's a landmark, but we don't have any information other than what this, you're very nice, but I don't have any information more than that. So I, I'm not going to vote in favor.
So Joseph, what, or staff, what kind of, I'd say those, for all I know, it's a Russian olive that was planted 20 years ago. I don't know. I, I'm not into that. The tree's a tree to me.
I'm not gonna, I, I don't feel comfortable.
No, what I'm saying is if, if I could state my question, do you, are you not, even if it is a significant species in that, would you be not interested in saving that? Or are you just saying that just, it's a landowner's tree. He should have the right to demo it if he wants to.
Good question. I, I would think, I would hope Ivory Homes would be at the very least okay with maybe moving it. And I know there's a way to do that. You can actually relocate such things. It's, it's possible. But that would be what I would, that would probably be the extent of what I'd hope they would do. If they're willing to make it a little park or open space, that's great. But I don't know what they're willing to do and they're not here right now. And I don't know if it's a landmark tree. Like you said,
Right, I don't either.
From the picture, just from the picture, it looks 20, 25 years old, pretty common tree, but I don't know. So I'm, I'm going off of the picture.
They could have put their lots so that trees in the backyard, just like the cul-de-sac, that, that could be a premium lot.
That would be great.
It doesn't necessarily need to sacrifice.
Right. I, I don't, and we don't know exactly where it stands on the plat.
I, I like trees for the record. I just, I don't have enough information today to have.
We've already closed, closed public hearing.
So I just have a question on the tree though. So my name's Steve too.
Okay.
Oh, let's get personal now.
That is personal. The only question I have is if the tree was to be saved, who would pay for the maintenance of it then afterwards? Who would own that tree and who would take care of it?
Great question. Thank you. Thank you.
It's just slippery. Great question.
You didn't hear us close public comment? We did.
We, yeah.
Yeah. Kim, did we close it public hearing? Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's a valid question though. I mean, that would have to be, there'd be an HOA associated with that space or something like that.
Yeah, it's a Steve's, Steve and Steve the tree. You'd almost be requiring whichever landowner purchases it to take care of it. But Ivory could, Ivory could market that as a perk. And frankly, it is a perk. It's a mature, beautiful tree.
Yeah, give you instant shade.
It really is. But again, I don't, I don't feel comfortable for, having the government force them, the property owner, to do something like that without enough, I don't have enough information. I just don't feel comfortable. You ready for the motion?
You have strong feelings either way? Because could we ask them to just look into it?
I wish the applicant here was here to speak for themselves. They have a significant development. I think they should be here to speak to this point.
Yeah, that's great wording.
If the commission is comfortable with staff taking that assignment, between now and the council meeting, done.
So, so that should probably be explained. So between now and when the council would hear it, which would again be a chance, that's, that's where it gets approved, would be, you would have an answer for that to be able to express to the council and to concerned citizens about what could be in that.
And we may be able to look into some other things like health of the trees, species, and we have some people in staff that have someone building a median through that.
That was kind of the direction I was looking at when I was trying to talk to Commissioners about that, yeah.
Unless you guys object to that, we would ask.
I object if it becomes a significant burden on the landowner. That's, I believe something that's fairly unprecedented that I'm aware of that the Spanish Fork government has done. And it seems, I, I don't have any information on it. I, I don't have no idea about that tree.
Neither do we, but we're happy to explore that. And I mean, in all honesty.
If, if it's, if it's, my opinion is if it's a significant cost at all, I'm, I'm completely against it unless the application goes through. And then that, let's let the state application run its course and we'll let the state government and the city government work it out.
It would also be the, it's going to be the council that rules on this. They're going to approve one or another. It's just our recommendation up to that point.
And so you, they have my opinion now at this point.
Can I speculate on one thing? To Commissioner Ernest's point, um, the type of protection that I think we're talking about, I'm not terribly familiar with. But I am familiar with, for example, protecting historic structures and that type of a thing. And I'm not aware of a situation where protections can be put in place without the consent of the property owner. Oftentimes, it's the property owner that's making application to have some type of protection put in place. And usually there's some incentive dangled out in front of them to, to take that, that encumberment on a property. I'd be surprised if it's different in this case. And that's another thing we can look into.
Okay. Does anybody feel comfortable making a motion?
I can make a motion. I think we, I might get a negative vote on it, but I can make a motion.
Can I make one point? Might I say something?
Sure. I'm interested for what it's worth.
I don't think there's anything legally that would stop Joe Ivory Holmes from taking a chainsaw at that thing to knock to.
Yes, there is.
No, they're not because he owns the property.
No. Utah law, section 65A protects heritage trees.
But it's, it hasn't been classified as a heritage tree.
My point is if it hasn't been classified as of right now, there's nothing that would stop a guy from cutting down.
Acceptive.
I'm just saying, if it's, if it's my property and I own the property and it hasn't been classified as a special tree, or you should tell me what I can do with my property.
Thank you. So, so he's echoing my sentiment. It just feels really overreaching for the government to do something like that.
But I can tell you that Utah has allowed for that. That the state of Utah.
I guess to summarize what they're saying though is it hasn't happened yet. And so at the moment, there's nothing that we've done, is what, that's all he's pointing out, is tonight, there's nothing. That, I, we're not aware of the land transaction where it's at. That would be, that would be something to, with the title companies and that, those entities.
I, I'll make a motion, Todd, if you want me to. You want to make a motion?
Sure, you can make a motion. I can't stop you from making a motion.
You could. I'm giving you the authority. No, I'm not.
Why don't you make a motion?
I move the planning commission recommends approval of Spanish Highlands East preliminary plat and zone change contingent, contingent upon compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm used to this. It's fine.
Do we want to discuss it?
My second, though, I, my second would be contingent upon that, on staff looking into the validity of the, the claim on the, the tree. Other than that, I'm fine with the entire subdivision. I mean, it's a silly, I, I, that might be, I think it should be looked into.
When you say staff looking into the,
Spanish Fork staff.
Looking, looking into the validity of the application for the heritage status, status, status of that tree. That, that could hold up this property owner's development rights.
No, it takes up, it takes up between now and city council.
Year or two for the state to finish their application process.
I didn't say, you put words in my mouth there that I didn't say.
That's true.
I said, I said to have staff look into it between now and city council to, to, they have people on staff, Davis said, they're going to look into the species of the tree, the age of the tree. It might be on its last year of life and would welcome being cut down. I don't know. But staff could look at it and then city council can know that our concern was with this beautiful tree that's been out there. It's a, a neighborhood landmark. They have a report on what the tree is and what it is not. And they can say, great, do it or don't.
So your contingency is just the staff looking into the tree?
That's my only, that's my only addition to that.
And then coming with a recommendation to the city council.
Yes.
How far are you willing to allow the city to go to protect the tree?
I'm willing to let the staff have two weeks to look into it. I'm not willing to go that far.
And at that point, make a recommendation.
But no other guidance for staff other than just look into it?
And report back to the council.
Regardless if it's a motion or not, staff's going to look into it.
Based on our past track record, you're not going tonight.
So would that be considered a separate motion?
So it could be direction, it could be, it could be direction to staff.
Todd, question. Are you okay with staff's recommendation at that point then to council about the tree?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that's what you said.
I am. That's, that's my whole point. Yes.
That's important.
Yes.
I think we're going to have to re.
The motion to staff.
I haven't amended the motion.
Okay. So did it die or are we creating a new one?
Do you want to create a different motion?
I will create another one.
It's counter.
Counter motion. The lawyer.
I move that the Highlands East preliminary plat be recommended according to staff's findings and conditions with the additional condition that city staff looks into Steve the tree and its history and, and species and give a, a report as best they're able to, city council by the next meeting. So they can have that information in making their approval on the zoning change.
Okay, we have a motion.
The plat and the zone change?
The plat and the zone change, yes. Thank you.
I'm going to second it. And the reason I'm going to second it is so that this lack of motion doesn't hold everything up for the, because I'm overall in favor of the development.
Yes, I'm, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. That will go, there was a lot of you here for it. It will go to city council in two weeks from yesterday. So, right? Barring anything unforeseen. Okay. Next, zone change for Hollow Acres.
I'm going to take a long moment to look closely at the aerial. I don't believe there's a cousin of Steve on this property.
Do we need to zone in slowly?
Yes. What's interesting is I've, I've dealt with heritage trees before, but never prior to his designation. So that's where it is a little sticky.
Gotcha.
We build around them. We've, I've done several projects where we had to build around them, but again, it's been the cities coming back saying this is designated a landmark and you have to protect it.
Sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Hollow Acres. So this is just up the road to the north along Spanish Fork Parkway. The applicant has a similar request. So we've got a combination of a preliminary plat approval and a, a, a zone change. So this is a similar designation, looking for R112, slightly, slightly smaller, excuse me, on the project scale. We're looking at 11 lots. If we jump to the next slide, you can see the arrangement. Next slide we'll do. So here at the bottom of the screen, this would be Spanish Fork Parkway. Here. So north is to our left. You can see the considerable amount of space that will be improved, dedicated, turned over to the city as far as helping alleviate traffic as it comes through this field. Gets very narrow.
Brandon, where will the road in that space, how far, how much that will be roadway? Is it back to the lot line?
So this cross section, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, this will include a wall. Then it'll have four feet of landscaping, then a 10-foot trail, then 12-foot planter, two-foot curb and gutter.
There's a lot of feet.
There's a lot of feet.
Okay.
Yes. DRC did give some. Yes. But if we jump further north, we'll see where we're at. So if we go back a, back a slide, please. So you can see we've got an existing road connection here. Obviously, the frontage along Spanish Fork Parkway. This one's already improved. There will be the connection though for the street made. And then at the discussion level with the, the applicant, there is the connection that's provided for potential future development and connectivity to the east. Staff feels it's pretty straightforward. It's R112 zone that's being requested. That is consistent with the general plan as I previously stated. And then we do have a few red lines that are being worked through. And so with the motion, we would request that you have the findings and conditions as outlined. And then ultimately, any approvals of the preliminary plat would be contingent upon the city council actually approving the zone change that would accommodate.
Would the lot sizes otherwise allow for a permitted use plat?
If you jump to the next slide, the reason why it has to be, I think, is just this center lot right here, I think, was just shy of the minimum width needed.
Who's developing these?
WPI. We have the applicant here tonight. Be more than happy to speak to you if you have any questions.
WPI.
Any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Developer, you want to speak after if we have questions or now? We can go after unless you have anything pressing. Okay. We're going to enter public hearing. So anyone here to talk about this development, please come up.
I had questions on other ones, but I was, the rules say you can only speak once, so it's my one time.
Thank you.
Michael Tutton. And I live just corner of this development. And I was wondering why the city's putting in these big planter areas that they fail to maintain on a regular basis and that require extensive amount of watering that sometimes they do and don't do. I live right on 400 and my property, on the backside of my property is one of these planter areas. And it does create a buffer between the trail and the road, but the city is not maintaining them. And they're encouraging me to tear out all of my park strip. And they're encouraging me to tear out all of my park strip because of watering issues and irrigation and zero-scape it. So I'm wondering why this, why the planning commission-
Why the hypocrisy?
Yeah.
And here, and it's this, it's this buffer strip along the-
Yeah, and, and then there, it doesn't, it doesn't state what it's doing on the other side, but it looks like it's just gonna be curbed right to the property line, so I don't see a sidewalk on that side, because there is a sidewalk on the other side of that road. So I was just curious also what they were doing with that, and then I was also curious on the, on the intersection there, if they're planning on doing a, a four-way or another roundabout in the future, or they're just gonna leave it as a two-way stop, so.
Thank you. Anyone else speak to this development?
Am I about to talk?
Steve, come on up.
Because I was looking right towards our-
That's right, you're out of public hearing.
Steve Mon, I live just right up the corner. What's the style of the houses? Like, what's, do you have any profile shots, any elevation shots? What would be-
We'll have them come up and talk about that here in a second.
Oh, you are?
Perfect, yeah.
I'll go first, sir.
Okay.
I didn't know that one speak once.
You can come on up again. We'll make some different rules, I guess.
Brian, you can come up again, too.
Where does, where does this anticipated to go? This is the easement, so it's kind of, unless it goes straight under, and then-
What was your name?
Oh, my, sorry, John Sumption. I live down the street on Spanish Fork Parkway, and then I wondered, what's the plan for this triangle? And what's the plan for improving this side of Spanish Fork Parkway? Those are my questions.
John's second question is also my question.
Something I can say to you, Antil?
Yeah, go ahead.
August Bigelow, I live down in Maple Highlands. My concern somewhat is about like, what's, what's the average cost of these houses? I mean, like, prices are ballooning quite a bit with that Ivory Homes development coming in right then. Ivory Homes are typically a pretty price, priced quite high, like I spend, just stuff around. Affordable housing kind of is like, really something that racks my brain a lot, so I'm just curious, is like-
You're in favor of affordable housing?
Yeah.
You're the only one?
Well, I mean, not really, but, but no, it's, I mean, it's like, it's, I mean, even just down in my, my houses, property buyers grow up going up considerably, and I'm just curious if what this style here is gonna be like.
Gotcha.
Things in the neighborhood, stuff like that, just, people need to live somewhere, so I want them to live here by me.
Gotcha.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will go out of public hearing, and then we'll talk about some of these concerns.
When you said your second concern, was, John's second comment was yours, were you talking about the-
Triangle?
Triangle or-
Timing on the, because this development is gonna widen out this portion here. There's a sharp, kind of, you have to veer right over here, and then you gotta come over here, because it hasn't been widened yet. So, Michael, if you would, confirm that this is gonna be widened along the development. And then, and then my question is, what's the plan for the further widening up here? Because what's gonna happen now is there's gonna be another turn in this way, and back in, it's just gonna be, keep getting moved.
Is this all one landowner? Is this all the same landowner?
Does developer want to come up and answer some of those questions? Come on up.
Did you close public hearing?
Yeah.
My name's Daniel Schmidt with WPA.
Perfect.
We're working with the landowner. It is one landowner. Next door is Rocky Mountain Power, we've worked with, or tried to work with Rocky Mountain Power for the last number of years on mutual interest on property lines, joint development, et cetera, et cetera. We thought we were getting somewhere about a year ago, and now we, you know, it's fifty-fifty where that's going. The only reason I mention that is that the, you know, there's a question about the cross street, and I know Michael might have been addressing that, but the, the idea is the connection through to this project here and straight out. As you may already be aware, the power lines from Rocky Mountain Power are about a hundred and fifty feet wide, I think, quite wide, run through the project. This being one lot owner and Rocky Mountain Power owning the other lot creates very awkward development angles. We tried a application here, you know, about a year ago for a little bit more of a global solution, getting to your question, Commissioner, about developing the entire property and/or the entire road, it wasn't seen in public interest at that time for anything sort of north of what's being proposed right now. After reworking the plans, the plans, and plans, and again, trying to, again, work with Rocky Mountain Power, the decision, primarily because of timing, has been decided just to zone and do the development as proposed for your consideration tonight. Since of the types of homes, the lots, the lot size really kind of largely dictates the kind of home that's being built. It'll be commensurate with, you know, the stuff, the stuff to the south, even though that's a little older, you know, arrives newer product here to the east, and, you know, somewhat with ivory homes there. We know that's not sort of an affordable housing kind of situation, but that's what the zoning kind of dictates. There isn't designs or anything for those yet, like there is sort of ivories. We'd like to see the north part of that property develop as soon as possible, the landowner would, I should say. But until we can find a suitable product that the community and council and everyone else can embrace.
Is it zone commercial, the northern half?
It is not, it is agricultural currently, or the whole parcel is agricultural.
General plan for commercial though?
No.
Sorry to interrupt.
The north side.
This up here.
Okay, that's what I missed, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Apologize for interrupting.
That's great, and the, so the landowner's intent is to get this zoned underway, at least make some progress there, and then try and find amiable solutions for the stuff in the north, and as soon as that can come to fruition, that'll happen.
Any comments on the type of homes being built here? I don't see any elevations or plans in our packet.
Correct, there are not elevations or anything designed specifically, and that's why we're mentioning, you know, it'll be comparable to the arrive or anything to the south, even though this is older and/or ivories kind of product.
What's, are you guys gonna do the horizontal improvements and then sell off the lots? Are you, what's the plan?
We'll, we'll be doing both levels of improvements. We'll be doing the horizontal and the vertical.
Okay. WPI?
WPI, our housing group, WPI is our commercial group. WPI resident, Westwood Homes is our residential group.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Okay, another question or concern was brought up is the park strip or the watering of the planters on the outside. Brandon or Dave want to speak to that?
It's interesting, you don't necessarily dictate that it has to be grass. Usually, that's the easiest for the developer to put in, and it's the easiest for maintenance. Obviously, there are a lot of efforts statewide to address conservation, and so that's something we can definitely talk about with our Parks and Recreation Department. We do have a standard process, though, as far as getting those landscaping plans reviewed and approved, and so that's something we can bring up with them. But as far as existing park strips, it's similar to the parking enforcement concern, you know, if there's concern about maintenance, mowing, watering, the earlier the city gets notified, the earlier it can be reviewed and addressed.
So notify the city, just calling to the Parks Department, which department?
Either the Planning Department or the Parks Department, either or.
Yeah. Okay.
Brandon?
So, I was just gonna address the part about the-
Street trees?
Parks. So if we can zero-scape, I'm being slow pulling this up, so it can be zero-scaped if the contractor, if the developer proposes a plan, it's accepted. We don't blanket, say, yeah, you can do anything, just like landscaping plan has to be approved and all that. So that's one. As far as the city saying someone has to, you know, the foot or strip and those things, you see that's not a city ordinance, it's somebody at the Central Water and other folks are looking at doing, suggesting ways to have people save water, if there's any money being put towards that. I think, Brandon, that's a committee that we're looking into. They're looking for comments on a, what would you call it, first draft of proposed requirements? Is that a fair way to say it? Anyway, but as far as like the city going out saying, you have to do this today, that's not something that we're-
I think we kind of addressed it already, but this triangle piece is owned by Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain Power, so that's there. And then, Mike, to the last question, we had a question about the intersection coming out, I believe, is that just gonna be a stop sign? What will that be?
I think he was asking about-
Oh, the one in the south?
It'd be a two-way stop, the through-street, Spanish Fork Parkway wouldn't stop. There would be sidewalk required on the south edge of the east. The question was, is it curb and then property line, or how's that laid out? That would be just like the opposite side of the road.
And this will just dead-end?
Oh, sorry.
No, I, go ahead. And this wouldn't just dead-end there, tell this property is developed, but, I mean, with the constraints on it.
Yeah, and they don't own it too, so it's, it is hard. We've had Rocky Mountain Power approve roads underneath, there's a sway in the, you guys know this, but there's a sway in the lines, there's actually, beyond the lines, there's an easement beyond that that you can't building there, so, there's some stuff like that. So, yeah, this would just be a dead-end. And, yeah, the north side would look similar to the south side here, with a, you know, planter strip and sidewalk.
We're about to trail to the west.
Okay, continue forward, up?
Yeah, so I would just keep going, and it's saying-
Eventually connect to fourth north and further.
And as, the question came about on, when is this continued with development is the first answer, right? If it's something the city feels like there's, and I'm saying the city, it'll be, this, city council feels like that is something money is wanting to be spent to buy a property from them to widen the road and do those things, that would be a consideration. As far as this proposal, it would just go to the end here, and then there'd be an asphalt taper with signs to direct people.
And John's not here, so I think that I should cover it for him, but I think there's an irrigation ditch that goes right here. Is there, is there one that comes here as well that will have to be piped?
Can you give us the history of that line?
I don't know the history of it and how much water it carries, but I'm trying.
Are you familiar with Western homes? Are you, do you be familiar with Western?
I think it's farther.
I just tried to find the website.
I think it ends, I don't think the homes extend all the way up here, right?
No.
We're down, yeah.
You're down.
Right where the, right where the power lines start to enter the property. The plat shows just a small easement that clips the-
That's right. You're low.
So, it's gonna-
Yeah.
On both sides.
Has, has-
Do you have any other comments or?
I'm strongly feeling like I want to see elevations.
You want to see elevations?
I'm having a hard time. I just Googled Western homes, I have no idea.
Riverco.
Where's that? Show me some homes.
We just want to see some-
The master plan, we just have the standard is that we apply time of closing permit, so usually, we require them upfront.
Brandon, will you come up here and talk about that real quick?
With, with residential plots, where-
Can't believe we had to remind you of that.
That makes sense.
You're more than welcome to ask for those to be provided. I'm sure, Daniel, do you have a website we could go to real fast as far as the elevations?
For subdivision?
Yeah, unfortunately, no, there's no website, but Riverco subdivision is the most recent development in Spanish Fork City, just on the other side of the ball fields.
North of Fritzy?
Behind IFA?
Near ALA.
Oh, yeah.
So east of ALA.
On the east side of ALA.
Okay.
Great product. Well done.
So it'll be-
Looks great.
Presumably similar than that, similar to that with the lot sizes and other things in the market.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, I'm ready.
Could you repeat that? We didn't carry it on the back.
So, well, the question that was asked is what does the product look like? Because we're having, nobody's used to us homes, but over here, where we're being shown on the screen now, is a product that they have built recently.
Just tell me on, if you know where ALA is?
Could you do a street view of it?
I'm not, I, no, I can't. Can you? I can't.
I don't have Google Street, I don't have Street, it's a pre-deed.
I'm familiar with it, though.
There's some dirt.
So I can vote on it.
You gotta really tell me, is that jail the tree?
Those are nice homes, I've heard it passed every time.
Okay, homes.
At that point, they probably won't be a four.
That's the-
Given twelve thousand per for a lot, people are gonna put a product on it that's miserable in the land value, so it's gonna be-
You guys are-
Any discussion?
I'm, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay, then ready for motion?
I move the planning commission recommends approval of Hollow Acres preliminary plat and zone change contingent upon compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That, too, will go to city council, I believe, in two weeks. Okay, the last thing that we have, I believe, are we doing number nine tonight?
Number nine, yes. Number ten, no.
Okay. Number nine, general plan amendment, transportation master plan. Mike, is this you?
Yeah, there really are. We're changing the trail from one side to the other on the right, and on the left, adding the trail there. It's been through the Parks Department, I'm more proxy for them than, than engineering, but this is a proposed change they would like.